Lewis County Bids Report is now in session.
Okay, we have Rex McInnes here with us today, Minister of Tollesboro Christian Church, and he's also volunteer firefighter at Tollesboro Volunteer Fire Department. He's going to pray for us today. Thank you, Rex. We appreciate your service and coming to pray for us.
Thanks for having me.
If you would bow your heads. Father, we come to you today thankful for each of these men and women who've chosen to serve their communities, Father. Your word commands us to pray for them, and I just pray that you be with their hearts and minds as they make the decisions to best serve our communities, God. We thank you and praise you for all that you do through them and for us, and we just, we ask for your humble forgiveness and mercy. All these things we pray, in your son Jesus' name.
Amen. Thank you very much. And I'll ask the Sheriff Johnny Bivens to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Clerk Colrow.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horsey.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes. First thing on the agenda is approval of minutes from the regular meeting February 10th, 2025.
I've reviewed those minutes, and I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second and any further discussion? Clerk Colrow.
Mark Horsey.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Okay. Welcome guest and any response from the public. We'd welcome that at this time. If not, we have Melissa Greenwell with CEO of Comprehend Incorporated, and she'd like to talk to the court today. Welcome, Melissa.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for having me. I am making my rounds across the five counties that we serve, just making an appearance to talk about some of the services that Comprehend offers. We've been around for many years, but I feel like that it's, we offer a lot of services that not many folks are aware of, and so I just wanted to highlight some of those today. I'm not going to go through the handout that I gave you verbatim, but you do have a handout in front of you that lists about 60 different services that Comprehend offers. So I'm just going to highlight some of those that I feel like are really pertinent to Lewis County. But I'm going to start off by just saying that Comprehend is a nonprofit organization that has served the community since 1968. That's when we were formed, and we operate under four pillars of service. And all of the services and programs that you see on the handout in front of you are underneath of those four pillars. And those pillars are behavioral health, substance use, developmental disabilities, as well as prevention. So I'm going to just work my way through and highlight a couple of those underneath each one of those pillars. Under our behavioral health pillar, we have our mobile crisis services. And so with that, we have a mobile crisis team that offers immediate interventions for individuals who are in crisis. That includes in-office as well as mobile crisis services, and those services do respond in Lewis County as well. We also respond to our local hospitals as well as the local jail. Our mobile crisis team is comprised of a clinician, a case manager, a peer support specialist, and then 24/7 assistance to de-escalate crises, prevent hospitalizations, and connect individuals to treatment as well. We've also just launched and signed an MOU with Lewis County for our 988, which is our National Suicide and Crisis Hotline for all mental health crises. We're a call center that is fully staffed to answer those calls alongside of 911 dispatchers. Under our substance use pillar, we operate an intensive outpatient program, and we have one of those physically located here in Lewis County that is a program that is a structured treatment program that offers individuals who are struggling with addiction and requires nine hours of group therapy per week, and those do happen here within the county. It integrates education, group therapy, and then the 12-step principles as well to address the holistic approach to addiction. We've also just opened up a buprenorphine clinic that will be utilized by folks in Lewis County as well. That clinic physically is located in Mason County, but we will be working with patients from Lewis County who want that, want and need that treatment to be able to get them to Mason County for that. We also have a developmental disability program called Adult Day Training that offers individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities a place to go during the day to help them build up their skills, so they participate in self-care, training, community integration, and then vocational experiences at our thrift store, which is located in Maysville, called Another Man's Treasure. So that's all skill building. And then under our prevention umbrella, we work with all the county schools under our regional prevention center that focuses on substance use prevention, where we educate schools, workplaces, and community groups on what that looks like. We offer programs like the Stop Youth Coalition, where we engage high school students across the region promoting substance-free living. And we are the fiscal agent as well as providing the technical support for our local ASAP board and have a youth representative that serves on that coalition that is from Lewis County as well. Through our prevention efforts, we also offer Narcan training, parent education, and then real-time resources. So I wanted to give you guys just a few numbers, just to wrap up, but in Lewis County, we, last year, we saw nearly 1,000 people, 1,000 residents within Lewis County with a total combined services of close to 10,000 for those 1,000 people that utilized our services from your county. Does anybody have any questions for me at all?
Melissa, what's this address? It says the Wardrobe, 83 Second Street, Vanceburg. What is the Wardrobe?
The Wardrobe is, it's a thrift store, just like Another Man's Treasure. So that's operated out of our main outpatient office here on Second Street.
Okay.
But people can donate to that, and then our folks from the Life Connections Program work that.
Okay, thank you.
Work that thrift store, just to help them build skills.
Any other questions for Melissa? Okay. Well?
Well, I appreciate the opportunity. If you guys have any questions at all at any time, feel free to reach out to me. I'd be happy to talk through any of the services. Again, I just think it's important that people understand the breadth of services that we provide. I know a lot of people are very understanding of our behavioral health and sometimes even our substance use, but I'm not sure that the wealth of programs that we offer is well-known, so appreciate your time.
Well, thank you, Melissa. Thank you for coming. So have you guys reviewed the paper here in your pocket from Comprehend?
Yeah, George, I'd like to make a motion to donate 5,000.
Okay. Do we have a? A second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? And Clerk Colrow.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horsey.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on, we have Missy Hardy with us here from Buffalo Trace Area Development. Welcome, Missy.
Thank you and good afternoon. Lewis County was the recipient of a hazard mitigation grant for the development of a debris management plan. Once that was awarded, they contracted with the ad to develop that document. So I just wanted to come to you all today and see if you all had any questions about that grant because it was done under a previous administration.
If I understand that right, is that about a $60,000 grant?
Yes.
And we are going to, I think that what Buffalo Trace would like to do is to do that in about six steps, and us, we would pay them $10,000 at a time, and once we get it done.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Or will we get that back in $10,000 segments?
Yes, we will. We won't be able to give the whole amount at one time.
Yeah, so I mean, will we, we will receive it back in like six payments of 10 if we?
Yes, it's completely a reimbursable program. You are responsible for a 13% income portion to the program.
Yeah, okay.
And we do that through community meetings.
Okay. Well, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we go ahead and move forward with this hazard, our debris management plan for Lewis County.
I guess, George, do you know the specifics of what it's, I mean, it sounds pretty broad. Are there, do you have any additional information specifically what this is going to accomplish?
What it is, it's just a comprehensive plan of debris cleanup should we have, such as, you know, kind of what they have down in Southeast Kentucky right now, you know, cleaning up if we had a major flood and debris in homes and over the roads and everything, a big mess. And it is a.
Yes, it is a hazard mitigation plan. That's how we would say it to that tank of dust.
Okay.
Yeah, so that we know who's going to, who's going to clean it up and who's going to haul it out and where they're going to take it to, and it's pretty much every detail.
Yeah, I had that same question. Do we actually have to make a motion for approval, or you just give us?
No, it's what I thought.
That's what I was asking.
That's what I thought.
I just wanted to catch your day.
So there's no motion.
Everyone probably first hands the invoices for work completed, and I just wanted to come out and see if you had any questions.
Yeah.
Well, I did have some questions, but I think they're answered now, so I really appreciate it.
A lot of the counties have them and a lot of the counties don't. I mean, but, but I think it's a, we'd be really happy if we ever have a mess like they got down there in Southeast Kentucky that we have that planned, so.
Does this pertain to just floods, or like a tornado, it would come, a lot of debris and tornado?
Either.
It covers?
I'll answer it.
Yeah, yeah. All right, any other questions for Melissa? We thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is open the bids on the CPPP road projects.
This first one's from HG Mays. It was received March 10th, 2025. Let's see, total quotas for 12 trees, Beechey, Cannon, Church Road, Fire Brick Indian Run Road, and two portions of Lower Kenny Road. Quote total $190,136. This next one's from Brown County Construction. It was received today as well. Same roads, grand total is $201,911.83.
So those were the only ones we got then?
Yes.
Okay.
What was the first bid?
HG Mays totals $190,136.
And that is the same road?
Yes, they're the same. Brown and Eaton is the same, yes.
So HG Mays is the cheapest one, right?
Yes.
It'd be $11,000?
Yeah.
$11,000 cheaper.
Based on previous experience, are they comparable type of services? I guess that question's from David.
They've both done roads for us, haven't they, David?
Yeah, they have made the specs.
So I'd just go ahead and recommend that we do HG Mays for $191.36.
And I have a question. Does the, does the bids match the funding? So does that mean those are locked in, or now does that step go to the state?
It goes to the state for, to be approved.
Yeah.
Yeah, you've already signed it.
Yeah, I know they've been, but have, do we know the amount of money from the state? Like, is this?
No.
Because I made this mistake before. Once we do this, like, that's getting done. That doesn't necessarily mean them roads are getting done.
No, this is a different program. These are the roads that, of course, they still have to, they still have to sign off on it.
Yeah, but that's.
This is a different program, yeah.
So being, being in the HC Mays was the lowest bid, I'd like to make a motion we go with HC Mays.
Okay, well, I made the motion, so he seconded it.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? And Clerk Colrow.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horsey.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Okay. Next is Lewis County Clerk's 2024 fee settlement.
I attached a full year adult expenses, just in case anybody had any questions. I know it's a lot of information, so if you don't think of anything now, whenever you look at my office or go through that, you can stop by the office, and I can go over everything in detail, just as a breakdown on what goes, what's actually going where. If you have any questions that you think of now, just let me know.
Kenny, do we have to accept receipt of that? I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion from Woody, a second from Mark. Any further discussion? Clerk Colrow.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horsey.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes. Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you.
Next is agreement with Brewer Lawn Service.
I'm making a motion, sorry. I make a motion to move forward the lawn service agreement.
Okay, yeah, we've had disagreement for a while with them. So thank you, Woody, and do we have a second? Well, I'll go ahead and second it.
I'll second.
Okay, so we got a motion for Woody, a second from Johnny. Any further discussion? Clerk Colrow.
Mark Horsey.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Next is a housing for Lewis County with a Round County Detention Center to house our prisoners if needed.
Make a motion to move forward with the adult detention center agreement with Round County.
Okay, we got a motion from Woody.
How's this compared to our other agreements with other counties, as far as the inmate per day?
This one, they did stay the same as last year with them. Mason County is higher, but I did check their rates. They are the same as they was last year. Round County is, I think $42, I think is what it says.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. So Woody and Mark, any further discussion? Clerk Colrow.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horsey.
Yes.
Next is acknowledge presentation of the 2025-26 jail budget.
Make a motion of acknowledgement.
I'll second.
Okay, Woody and Mark, any further discussion? Clerk Colrow.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horsey.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Next is ordinance number 25-01, Lewis County Physical Court Budget Amendment, FY 2025.
An ordinance relating to the fiscal court, I'm sorry, to the fiscal year 2425 annual budget and amendment thereof, whereas the Lewis County Fiscal Court has realized unbudgeted receipts from the following funds. Be it ordained by the Lewis County Fiscal Court, the Commonwealth of Kentucky, Section 1, the budget for fiscal year 2024-2025 is amended to increase, decrease the receipts of the following funds to include unbudgeted receipts from animal shelter, spay and neuter grant in the amount of $1,146. Section B appropriations, animal shelter, spay and neuter grant in the amount of $1,146. Section 2, the amounts of adjusting the revenue accounts in Section 1 are for governmental purposes.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 25-01.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion from Woody, a second from Johnny. Further discussion? That was the spay and neuter grant, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So Clerk Colrow.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horsey.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn. Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Next is a approval or temporary easement on Roble Eppworth Road Bridge replacement. Ben has prepared this and I haven't got it signed yet, but I'm planning on dropping it off today, and it'll have to be notarized by three different people, and I'll try to get this back as quickly as I can, if you all approve it.
So this is a temporary easement to allow for passage while the bridge is being reconstructed.
Yeah, to put a detour in.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mark and Johnny, any further discussion? Clerk Colrow.
Mark Horsey.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
And J, Resolution Number 25-06, Appointing Members to Lewis County Ethics Commission.
Resolution 2506, a resolution appointing members to Lewis County Ethics Commission, whereas it is believed that the terms of the members of Lewis County Ethics Commission have expired, and new members require appointment. Lewis County Judge Executive George Sparks hereby nominates the following individuals to serve in the Lewis County Ethics Commission for a term of four years. George Plummer, Jill Lecall, Jennifer Meadows. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lewis County Fiscal Court approves the three individuals listed above to serve in the Lewis County Ethics Commission and shall serve terms of four years each.
George, I assume you've spoke with these individuals and they're going to serve in four years?
We have.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2506.
Okay, we got a motion from Mark.
Second.
Second from Woody. Any further discussion? Clerk Colrow.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horsey.
Yes.
Okay, next is a surplus vehicle for the Lewis County Judge Executive. We got the new vehicle. It's great. I appreciate you all approving me to get that. It's very nice. And the other one, I asked the road department. They've, they've got the Tahoe that Sheriff gave them, and so they're going to be able to use it. Don't need the Yukon, so we don't want to just let it sit over there. So I would ask that we surplus it in this upcoming auction.
I'll make a motion to surplus the vehicle.
Second.
Yukon.
Okay, a motion from Johnny, a second from Woody. Any further discussion? Clerk Colrow.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horsey.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes. Will it be in the sale out here at the Cookers when the head is coming?
Yeah, Matt's going to take care of that. Thank you, Matt. I appreciate him and Johnny helping us with getting the other vehicles. Okay, next is to hire Jeff Thurman at Lewis County Workforce Department, pay rate of $12 per hour. He's already working, doing a good job for us, and I would ask for your approval to keep him.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, Mark and Woody, any further discussion? And Clerk Colrow.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horsey.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn. Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Next is approval to hire Myron Kahn Seasonal at Lewis County Solid Waste, pay rate $12 per hour.
I'll make a motion to hire him.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion from Johnny, a second from Woody. Any further discussion? He's a very hard-working man. I'll give him that, and we're happy to have him.
Just don't, Roger Waldo said he'd like to have you full-time.
Yeah, yeah, Michael Myron.
Okay, Clerk Colrow.
Mark Horsey.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Next is discussion of courthouse roof repairs. We've only got one, one bid on that was $17,725 from Horace Weaver, and I'd recommend that we hire him to do the work. He's, he's done the road department work. He'd done the roof at 911, and he's done everything he told us he'd do so far.
I think the last meeting, I think that Joey and Mark mentioned wanting other bids, but this is the only bid we got, so, yeah.
This is the only bid we have, yes.
It was advertised, right?
It was advertised.
Yes, it was, yeah.
I make a motion to move forward. He's done several projects at the school as well, and the exact system that looks like he's describing just got completed at the high school, and it's had really good success, and he also done the exact same system at Laurel Elementary. So I feel like I can speak, speak to Mr. Weaver's abilities.
Yeah, he tries to do a good job for us.
Yep. I'll second that motion.
So we got a motion from Woody and a second from Mark. Any further discussion? Clerk Colrow.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horsey.
Yes.
Okay, next is discussion of Cedar Lane, Warring Cemetery.
So I talked to the judge about this, and I spoke to Mark some, as, tried to get with Johnny there a little bit before the meeting, and haven't had a chance to talk to Joey. In all transparency, these roads would have never been discussed because I actually brought up Cedar Lane prior in administration, and the guidelines was brought up, stated it didn't meet. So in all transparency, they don't meet the guidelines. I feel like through the process of Lexi, it's opened that door to where there can be other caveats to the guidelines. What I have here is I've got two blacktopped roads that are both listed currently as private. Both went through county maintenance. I think the one, from what I'm gathering from past elected officials, Waring was probably paved two to three times under county. Cedar Lane was paved at least once. The description of Cedar Lane on the road list actually has it as gravel, soil, stone, which is inaccurate, but I think I'm only supporting things that we've already dug up as far as inaccuracies of records and those kinds of things. Not asking for anything to be made a motion in this meeting. I feel like there's going to be some people that want to be present for that, and they're going to have a month's time to, to come and, you know, kind of speak to, to these points. Also, Ben will have to obviously have a resolution created. I've got some facts there. Don't have to go over all of them. I think you guys can, can obviously look at them. Give yourself a second there to review it. Entertain any questions in this moment in regards to these two roads that can't be answered by, by the fact sheet, or can go home, study on it, and, and move forward from that. Or can go home, study on it, and, and move forward from that.
I personally, I would like to see these roads.
Hundred percent.
Uh, I know you sent me a text the other day and I'd, I'd meet with you about anytime.
Yep. The one's very short, um, it's almost, uh, you know, to the Portsmouth line there, um. And then Waring is, um, right there basically in the heart of Garrison.
It was like, like I said before, when they took Lexi Lane in, that opens the door to a lot of other people.
It, it, it does, it does, and kind of my thought process on this was. You know, in comparison to Lexi, Lexi was a known private developed area that was never touched by us, so yet we, you know, we took it in, which is, is fine. These roads was under clear assumptions, um, that they was county maintained. I, I mean, if you think, and I'm just kind of asking you guys to be very logical and a common sense approach to it. Private landowners aren't blacktopping.
Right, right.
And Waring is actually on the list, I, I referenced an email from the judge that is a county maintained cemetery. I feel like Waring's kind of got the bad end of the deal because it's named Waring Cemetery. Where there was this whole bit of stop work on cemeteries, but that's just because there's a cemetery that. Is at one section of the road that has residences on it, it's not like this road is only going to.
To a cemetery.
To a cemetery. Also, it meets one criteria of the guideline which, you know, Lexi, which didn't meet any of them basically, to the best of my knowledge, but there was one in particular that. You know, it has to have an entrance point and an exit point, you know, as far as like through traffic to where a truck or moose can go in and out without a turnaround. Cedar is not that, although Cedar does have a designated turn out, around that was used by the county at, at the end of the six, three hundred and sixty-five feet or whatever. That's it, I don't want.
Any other questions?
There's, there's, there's information on there, if it raises questions moving forward, everybody can reach out or you can ask, you know, publicly here today or.
Moose, do you have any input on? But like I said, I'd like to see, see the roads.
I will say Waring Cemetery had a CR number on it for years. I, I've got a picture here, I didn't give it to everybody, but I got a picture, when, when I brought up the fact that Waring Cemetery had a CR number on it. That the next day it was covered with green duct tape, I mean, that is what it is. Um, now it doesn't even have a road sign, but I just.
That fact is rather alarming to me.
Just, just like I said, just use common sense, I hadn't mentioned it, I hadn't mentioned Moose yet, and I haven't mentioned it to Joey yet. Um, but also I'm not asking for any action today, you know, a month out. Um, I've spoken to Lan- he- here's what I've ran into, and I've already told the judge this. Anytime I go, especially in Waring, not so much Cedar, Cedar is kind of an anomaly, okay, it's not gonna really impact. Uh, it would have impacted the requirement, say, three homes was the guidelines is what it would like to do. When I first presented this, there was three homes there. Now, since then, there's been loss of life and, and, and somebody's moved away. But when I talk to people about Waring, they look at me like I got a hundred heads, and like, well, that's already a public road. I'm like, well, it's not on the list that way, so it's hard to like. You know what I'm saying, it's hard to kind of present it without people kind of looking at you like you've been the, you know, you've been here for a decade, Woody, what do you mean it's private?
I'm, I'm older than you are, a whole lot older than you are, and there's a lot of roads in my area that used to be county roads, and they just quit maintaining them, and the imprint of the road's still there.
Yeah.
They never did have a number or name, it was just like Mark and me were talking earlier, that they didn't have very good record keeping, where they.
No, no, there's not.
Before they actually taken off.
There's not good records, there's really not a way to say that it, it was a county road, there's really not a way to say that it wasn't, I, I think. Maybe some people can shed some light on it, but no matter what it was or it wasn't, I'm just trying to do the process of. It, it, it is listed as private now, that's all I can go on, I, I can't, I cannot, and other than. You know, the people that said, you can quote me on this, is this was, this was taken care of. So.
We've got other roads that have been called on to maintain, that was maintained, maintained years ago. But they wasn't supposed to have been maintained, if we've got called doing it today, we'd be in trouble.
And, and I agree, I, I agree, that, that's what I'm saying, they are not, they are, they are private roads. I'm not, I'm not trying to subs- circumvent the system of adding them. And like I texted Ben and the judge, at the end of the day, it's, I'm one vote. I, out of you four, I need two more. Now, now listen, if that, if that's free throw percentage Johnny, that's awful, but if that's a batting average, I'm going to the hall of pain, right? So, I mean, I just, I just need like a common sense type of approach to it. And I will say, this, this was mentioned several months back that, that I would like to do this. And. I voted yes for Lexi, as we all did, it was unanimous votes in the record, it's not, not whatever, but.
I was kind of against it, but I was outvoted when it started, so, I, I did, uh, but, you know, that opened, like I said, that opens the doors to a lot of places.
It does, and, and I will offer the same courtesy to, to any magistrate. Um, and like I said, at the end of the day, if it's, if it doesn't get a second motion, I'm, I'm going to bed at night fighting, fighting for it.
You did what you could, right, right.
And I feel like. Well, I, I just, I just, just thinking through it is all I'm praying for, Ben, you act like you maybe had something to mention.
Yeah, you didn't.
Go ahead.
So my, my input on this is that the adoption of Lexi Lane into the county road system opened no such doors and changed nothing, um, in my mind, um, because. The law is and always has been that you can deviate from the, uh, requirements of adoption of a county road if there's good cause shown. There was good cause shown in that particular instance, it was included in the resolution, uh, for that explicit purpose of adoption. Um, I, I don't know, you know, if we're gonna do this, we need some good cause to put in the resolution. Uh, couple of questions I have is how many residents benefit?
Yeah, before I get that, I'll just clarify that, so I guess I shouldn't have said it opened the door, but when I first asked about Cedar years ago. It was simply said it didn't meet the guidelines, so therefore it didn't go to viewers and didn't do anything, and I accepted that, maybe I shouldn't have. Is that fair probably to say, I, I just accepted it and didn't.
Those guidelines are guidelines.
Sure, and, and I wasn't, and, and it was just basically like if it didn't meet that, you didn't get it, so it never went. Um. There was some things in there about two, two items, uh, the fire truck not being able to get across the bridge, which I felt like. We all can agree did could do. If we're speaking transparently and honest, Moose tested it and the fire people tested it, uh, and then as well as. You know, I think the term was used, insurance policy in, in the event that the bridge washed out, that we could replace it, which. I, I feel like I've been told this isn't gonna happen, and I hope that it doesn't, but I feel like. We may end up having to replace that bridge anyway when the inspector comes through now that that is a county bridge. I think it may get replaced sooner than later, actually. But it, it, other, you know, there's confidence that it maybe won't, that people will work with us, but it will, it will not pass the state inspection now that it's a county road that. And I'll be honest, I didn't think of that prior to the adoption of it, but, but go ahead, Ben, the, the folks there that you mentioned, uh, you wanted to ask about.
Yeah, how many residents, yeah.
Cedar, Cedar Lane is currently one with the loss of a life within the last two weeks. And, um, one moving away within the last few months, so it, it would have been three. Uh, to the best of my knowledge, three on Waring, three homes. If you go, if you count what is called both sides, and I think Moose probably understands when I say both sides. You got the veteran that lives on top of the hill, who, they're convinced it's a public road, they, I texted about the snow removal, which you, you went up there and did. Um. And I was like, well, I will see if they can do it because it's a private, and they hit me back with, well, no, it's, it's public. And then you have the Lambert family on what I call the Collinses side, um, Jill Lambert, those folks.
Yeah, so the, the private.
And maybe I need to give you this, Ben, too, I don't know if it helps, because here's the thing, other than saying that it was taken care of, and other than saying that it has been blacktopped multiple times. Especially Waring, I, I kind of see Cedar as an outlier, Waring I really don't, I, I just, I just don't see that, and. Keith Chapman is probably gonna come and be able to speak to it, um, he's the one that's kind of helped me through some of this stuff. Um. I spoke to my uncle Dane, who was road foreman for years, I don't know if he's gonna come, but he kind of helped me with some of the understanding and knowledge of it a little bit, too.
How many families live on the Waring Cemetery, you say?
There's gonna be three, I think, is best of my knowledge, I kind of, I couldn't really quite remember if that one, if that one house was accessed off Route Eight or if it was off Waring, I think it's off Waring. And I, I made a point in here that, you know, we have a lot of county roads, um. You know, take. Take Lexi for example, it's county road, it serves ten homes or whatever, but it's only really gonna serve those ten people. It's not a through road, you know, no one's driving it but the people there, whereas Waring is served by multitude of people. Um, to go, you know, to graves or whatever.
Yeah, so I was gonna say, make the distinction, there's such thing as a public road that is not county maintained, which I would consider. Waring Cemetery and all other cemetery roads as being public roads, which means they're open to the public, anybody can travel them.
Sure.
But they're not maintained by the county. When the transportation cabinet does their designation, it's either county road or private road. So just, I would say that is a public road, but not county maintained, if that makes sense.
Is it still listed with a PV number?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that transportation cabinet only has two designations.
But my, what my point is, is that yes, it is public, but it serves more than public, and I don't want to belabor you guys, I don't, I don't want to sit here and eat up the meeting, but I'll keep answering any questions if you want. But I, I appreciate Ben insight, again.
Yeah, just if you want a resolution, we can talk about what to put in there and then the court votes on it, obviously. Um, I did want to ask if you had spoke to the property owners concerning potential for right of way.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, a- and again, they all think I'm crazy talking to them because they already think that it's. Do you see, do you see how weird it is when you go talk to these people and they look at you like, ah, Woody's been there?
So is Warring Cemetery, that cemetery was it associated with a church or is it an independent cemetery?
So there is the Cameraman that owns a portion of it and sells lots off of it, which. I think we can sometimes get into this, what's a for-profit cemetery? Well, I don't know if anybody's ever like looked at a bid for what it costs to like mow a cemetery, but I don't know if anybody's profiting off of that, does that make sense? You know, you're out ex- I mean, unfortunately, people have to pass to even sell a lot or you sell a lot in advance, but then once you sell it, it's gone, but the maintenance of it is indefinite. But that is a fair point, I think it's Keith.
Okay.
Keith Camer.
Okay, those are the questions I had.
Sure, those are all good questions, those are good questions.
Any other questions or discussions?
Yeah, just one, and I think it's probably here, but did both or just one of these roads previously labeled with a, with a county road number?
Just the one.
Just Warring.
That I know of, the thing is Cedar Lane was del- developed at the exact same time as Christie Lane, which is a county road. It's Cedar Lane, it's just an offshoot that supplied to those lots, just like Christie Lane was, uh, taken in as a county road that only feeds two homes as well. It's just information out there. No expectation of people to jump right in and work on these or whatever, but. You can't have any hope of doing anything with them if they're not a county road, other than what we're already doing with Waring.
Okay.
My question is, I'll need you to dump these in, then they will be able to blacktop and stuff, is that, do the people fear that it's already, you got the county roads that needs the same attention?
I think we need a lot of roads blacktopped, and more importantly than that, I think we need a hot patch program to where we go fix potholes. I one hundred percent. I think we just bust our tail and do it, whether we subcontract out the work or whatever we have to do, I'm not, I've never been shy about spending money on to help people get their roads fixed.
Yeah, hot patching.
Even in this past winter, you know, I've brought up multiple times about subcontracting out or getting residential folks to, um, work on the roads, plow, do different things. And, you know, because we, we, we was behind the eight ball on a lot of stuff on that, and I think if we would have had. Some, some folks to help, help Moose's guys, we wouldn't have put them in such a tight spot.
Yeah, but you're one of the hardest people to help contract pushing stones, if it's paying their people twenty dollars there, and our boys only making twelve to fourteen dollars there, how is that right to them?
I just want to help the people, I'm just trying to get the job done.
I, I understand what, what you're saying, too, that it was time that they needed help, but I'd have to kind of agree with Moose, it's not really right. To hire somebody in and pay them more than what we're paying the county employees, that's caused a hard feelings to the county employees.
It, it, it does, it's, it's horrible.
They, they work for us all the time.
That, that's, that's fair, but there was a lot of areas that.
Yeah, I had a lot of phone calls.
I'm not saying do it on a regular basis, but I think in a moment of really great need, and that was a weird snow. If it hadn't been for Terry Lee Master in the Garrison area that got out that morning with no expectation of, of any pay, we would have probably been.
We had a lot of people in my area.
Sure.
That got out and used their own private equipment and plowed and snowed.
Sure. That's kind of has rough, yeah. But.
It would be nice to do that.
If it wasn't a bad one, I don't know why the governor declared a state of emergency in the whole state. It was rough here, and I went to several conferences and meetings, and it was, it was rough in a lot of other counties, we weren't the only county in the state that, that had. That took a few days to get the roads cleared out. Uh, I think they did a good job, and I left it up to David, he knew if he would ask for, uh, contractors that I would have been open minded to, but. That's how I feel about it, they did a good job, they worked a lot of hours, and it was tough on them, and, but it was a really bad snow.
Yeah, I agree, they did great and they did work a lot of hours, yeah.
Okay, well, we're ready to move on, no other discussion about the two roads. Okay, discussion of Red Cross donation. And you have a paper in there.
I make a motion to give it.
I'll second that motion.
So, um. Give what amount do you want to give?
I think it said, what is it?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five hundred dollars was the request, right?
We gave him a thousand dollars last year, I think, didn't we, Dennis?
Yes.
And they.
I'm okay, I'm okay with giving their request, I think you reported out last year, some of the stuff they do, the give back they do, I'm fine with it.
We've done several thousand dollars just in fires this year, so.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, well, we got a motion from Woody and.
Second.
Second from Mark, any further discussion? Clerk Colrow.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horsley.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Okay, next is, uh. Discussion of election services update.
I threw you in with, let him with everything. That paper in your packet, there's not an election this year, um. That is services that HARP recommends, it's like a manufacturer every four years. They do come in and do software updates and everything like that for free, um, on that sheet, it talks about flash drives and keys, um, what was the top thing on there, Woody?
Maintenance.
Maintenance. Okay, so yet.
Maintenance drives keys.
Okay, so, um, what that is, or, and there's some coin batteries and things that they replace that I can't get to, I've tried to do my own, um, and bought batteries when we've had Grant made to replace the big batteries. But this is something that they recommend, um, every four years, those thumb drives and the keys, that's what holds election results, if one of those goes bad, we would have to wait on a representative from HARP, probably to drive in from Lexington. I hated asking for that and they kinda threw it out there to us. I hate spending money on stuff, which I'm not, I'm asking you guys, but at the same time, um, we're, I'm gonna be honest, we're all on the ballot next year. If those machines go wrong and we didn't do this.
Is this covered by any kind of a grant? Most of the stuff we bought for.
We have. There aren't any grants to cover this right now. The only, the only positive, and it's not really positive because it's money, but that I can think of is where it is an election year, the court is saving about twelve thousand dollars because we don't have to pay poll workers. So that, that would help offset some of that. Um, I'm leaving that up to you. I mean, they recommended it to me, but it is one of those things. If, if something does go wrong with an election, especially since it's our election, um, that would, uh, and they said, well, we, we tried to get you guys and you didn't, but that's totally up to you, but that's what that's for, if you've got any questions on it.
I make a motion to move forward with it.
What's this quantity of forty? We have forty voting machines?
Uh, what that is, there, there are scanners, so, um, anything that, if you've ever been to the voting locations, anything that looks almost like a suitcase. Um, so one of those is on the scanners. Um, there's also ADA handicap machine called a touch rider that's in a case. And then there is also the print case that they had up when they scanned your ticket to print your ballot. So there's three different styles of those cases, but total forty.
Okay.
Um, yeah. So that's where the forty comes from. We don't actually have forty scanned, but that's between the ADA machines that you have to have federally. And the scanners and the prints. And the prints kinda just ensure that they're not getting the wrong ballot.
So the total is six thousand eight hundred thirty-three?
Yes, and what HARP told me, they can, I told Penny, they can split that up between fiscal years. They can do that monthly if you want. Um, that's, that's kinda up to you. It's whatever. If, if you all choose to do that, I'm fine with whatever.
If you were paying poll workers, it wouldn't be split up, right?
No, no, just being two big six thousand dollar chunks, one in May and one in November.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Clerk Colwell.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horsley.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes. All right, then we're gonna be moving on to the monthly reports. Lewis County Sheriff, Johnny Bivens. Thank you, Johnny. You and your deputies. Do a great job. Any questions for the sheriff? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the next is Lewis County Treasurer, Penny Lake.
I submitted a report as well. I'll be happy to answer any questions you all have.
Yeah, this receipt of five thousand fifty-three hundred forty-one to the animal shelter, does that include that grant?
No, it, it does not. Your grant won't be on there until this go around, cause it just hit the bank account. This go, it hit the bank account last week, the sixth.
Okay, so that, I guess, I'm assuming there's some transferred in?
Yes, we transferred five thousand in.
Okay.
We only received three hundred and forty-one dollars and one cent with donations, adoption and reclaim, but we transferred in five thousand.
And one other question, on disbursements under road, uh, two hundred ninety-nine thousand, that's higher than the numbers.
What do you mean? The receipts?
No, disbursements under road, two hundred ninety-nine thousand.
Yes.
I'm assuming that's.
We paid them vehicles.
Okay, all right, so that's, that's the big jump, okay.
Yeah, that's a big chunk there. We're them vehicles that you all approved, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion from Mark, second from Johnny. Any further discussion? Clerk Colwell.
Mark Horsley.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Okay, Lewis County Road Supervisor, David Goodwin. David's had a lot of, a lot of road issues here recently from the flooding. Had several roads wash out and, uh, put in culverts and still dealing with a bare branch, right?
Yeah, we had a culvert ordered for them.
Yeah. Getting ready to put in a bridge on Rybode Dapperth.
Well, I, I think Moose, with the weather that we've had, the snow and then the, the rain that we've had out, out in my area, of course, we didn't get real, real hard with the floods, but, uh, my area looks pretty good. I appreciate the work that you all have done.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, Moose, I've sent a couple of emails and I printed some of that out and shared with you earlier on several requests I've received recently. I know you guys are still playing catch-up from the winter and the flood, so, uh, appreciate that. If you have any questions, feel free to get in touch.
All right, any more questions for David? Thank you, David. We appreciate it. Moving on to the Lewis County Animal Shelter. Animal Control, Missy. We got Missy with us here today. You have any questions for her?
Nope, you've got some all pretty dogs out there. I was out there earlier. I'd like to adopt them all, but I can't.
Kate Tim Underwood.
Well, she'd probably be happy if he'd adopt, how many, five or six?
I've, I've got one now and he eats better than I do.
So, thank you, Missy. I know she's had a lot of calls, a lot of things since she's been out there in the last few months, but she's, uh, doing us a good job, working hard.
Appreciate, appreciate your work.
Missy's name is listed on the, uh, agenda here, but not on the report, I see. It just says animal control officer there, so. Feel free to add your name to that report. That's, we appreciate it.
All right, moving on to, uh, Lewis County Emergency Management Director, Dennis. Dennis has been busy.
I've submitted a written report. Couple of things I'd like to point out that are in that. We did receive storm ready recertification on February sixth. We've had that before and we're recertified with it. And that's kind of a big deal. It lets, uh, shows us that we have taken steps to be able to notify and help first responders and the public in times of bad weather. And I think we've shown that over the last, uh, couple of months through the snow and the flooding that we've had, um, in there. The hardware refresh that we got a grand thirty-eight thousand dollars for, they arrived today to install that open nine-one-one. That will be for all of our adding, uh, hardware and will allow us to upgrade that software. On that flooding, uh, the weekend of the fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, caused a lot of damage. Been on the phone today with FEMA and with KYEM, and I think we're going to meet that threshold of about sixty-two thousand dollars for the county, which will allow us to get reimbursement for some of the money that we're spending. Uh, it looks like about thirty thousand dollars on those cold replacements. Uh, should find out on that a little bit later today. Tomorrow's the deadline, but I think we're going to make that, uh, threshold of about sixty-two thousand dollars. And if, uh, there are any other questions on that report, if you'd like to answer that. Was able to go, um, as a pilot project, uh, to Frankfurt for the city state emergency operations center for a week with our incident management team, uh, to help with flooding down in eastern Kentucky, and that is a great experience.
Yeah, I visited down there, uh, in Frankfurt when I was down there with Dennis and, uh, they, they did a really good job. Everybody was very well pleased with the work they did at an emergency operations center and that's a great experience for him. I'm, I'm glad he went and did that. Appreciate it, Dennis. And, uh, also, the other thing is, is, uh, there was a water rescue during the backwater, uh, of the Ohio River down on, uh, Creeks Run Road, and, uh, they had to do a water rescue, uh, for a lady down there. And what we would like to, Dennis wanted to ask the court about buying a, a trolling motor, which costs two hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. I think they have, we're in Maysville.
Uh, Dunham's Sporting Goods in Maysville has them in stock. It's a forty-five pound thrust, which is what's recommended for that boat.
Yeah, to put on that little, uh, rescue boat, uh, they used the paddles to go out there and get this lady and, and they rescued her okay. Yes, I think the county owns that boat. We got it through a grant, a Buffalo Trace grant.
It's on our, it's on our insurance anyway.
And we keep it out.
Yeah, it's on our insurance.
Do you need a motion for that little motor, Judge, or is that just something we're gonna?
We keep it out to Vanceburg Fire Department and I know Dennis has worked with, uh, some of the sheriff's departments, uh, people about, uh, pulling that. Have a multiple people that can pull that in case we have to have it. And, you know, somebody gotta be around to get that thing out there.
Well, a motor doesn't do any good unless you have a deep cycle battery. Um, we got one of those available?
There's a battery there, but I'm not sure it's good. A battery for that, and they recommend about a hundred dollars.
So, we don't know if that battery's good, but what we need to do is, is partner with the Vanceburg Fire Department, keep that on a trickle charger, and we can probably do that. Do we, do you?
We need to purchase a battery and a motor both, probably.
I'm not sure how old that battery is that we have, and I'm not sure that it's even good.
Well, that's, that's what I say, so. A motor, like Mark said, a motor's not any good without a battery, or a battery's not any good without a motor, so we just will approve if, if we need to, to purchase both.
Sure. I think you're just gonna talk to the fire department. Were you gonna talk to them to see?
No, I think we should purchase it. That's what I would say, purchase, if you're all okay to purchase the battery and if that one needs to be replaced, and the trolling motor.
And just replace the battery too, while we're doing it.
We'll try to get them to put it on trickle charger and keep it charged in case we need it, so it'll be ready.
I would make a motion to purchase the motor as mentioned, and then in addition to that, whatever battery would be needed.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and a second. Woody and Mark, any further discussion? Clerk Colwell.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horsley.
Yes.
Just, just one thing, Dennis. Would you be the one to pick it up? Start.
Uh, I would be the one, or I think any of the deputies that have, uh, mounts to pull that trailer would be willing to do that too. I've talked with.
I'm talking about picking up the motor and the battery.
Oh, yes, I'll, I'll take care of that, yes. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. Next is the nine-one, uh, nine-one-one report. And there is a report in there, if you have any questions. You had a lot of calls, Johnny. Four forty-nine. Yeah. Oh, wow. A lot of calls, for sure. Thank you. Okay, no questions on nine-one-one, then we'll move on to, um, I got the solid waste, it's, um.
The solid waste, he won't be here yet. I have an appointment today. I've talked to him earlier today.
Yeah, yeah. Well, his report's in there, if, uh, Rogers is. I know he went to the conference in Louisville and, uh, we're planning to, uh, have a meeting here pretty soon. I wanna try to get, uh, Ben and, and Penny and Roger and a few other people together, and we're going to, uh, uh, talk about putting a countywide, uh, week cleanup. Try to get some trash cleaned up in, in the county. Of course, they're getting ready to do the litter abatement pretty soon, aren't they Penny? It'll probably be in the spring.
Yeah, we'll probably look at trying to hire next, in next fiscal court meeting, advertise for Ben or for John.
So, Roger's doing a good job and, uh, he's, uh, been in Ben's office quite a bit and mine too, but, but he's trying to, uh, work with several different places to try to get our county clean. And I appreciate that. Doing a good job for us. Next, we got Michael Bible with the, uh, Lewis County Ambulance Service.
Afternoon, everybody.
Hello.
So for the month, uh, total calls was a hundred and fifty-two for the county. We rolled twenty-three. We produced a hundred and twenty-eight run forms and we transported ninety-five patients in the month of February. We had twenty refusals, nine canceled before scene. We transferred five to flight. We had four cardiac arrests in the county, two DOAs. We had one welfare check and one patient assist. As far as our, uh, times, our average shoot time is two minutes and eleven seconds, and nineteen percent of those were less than forty-five seconds. Our average response time is fifteen minutes and eighteen seconds. Thirty-four percent of those were below eight minutes, which is pretty good for the county. Our top call this month was respiratory, which doesn't really surprise me with the way the weather's been going back and forth. People keep the heat on in the house. It'll get up in the sixties, seventies outside. They start breathing bad. You know, not to mention, we have a lot of older houses in the county, so that doesn't help either. Something I did add to the report, I added facility runs, so we took sixteen out of Vanceburg Hills, one out of Primary Plus in Vanceburg, one out of Primary Plus in Tollesboro, four out of SOMC Family Care.
Okay.
On that last page is our, uh, financials. The biggest thing we've done is we switched to the WEX fuel card. When we first opened up, we were getting everything up in ARCO, just, you know, billing it to them and then they'd get, give us a monthly bill. The nice thing about WEX is if we're in Portsmouth, Maysville, Morehead, wherever we're at, if we're low on fuel, we can stop with that card and we don't have to worry about getting back here to Vanceburg to get fuel. So, any questions?
Michael, go ahead. Just a couple of quick questions here. On this financial, that, that two hundred thousand dollars that we, that you borrowed, you haven't had to touch that, right?
Nope.
Earlier on in our discussions, very early on, when we was trying to look at some of the financial on this and trying to make some estimated guesses, one of the, one of the large unknowns was percentage of what would be Medicare/Medicaid runs versus private insurance. Cause I know private insurance is a whole different ballgame for the, for the service. Do you have those metrics, those percentages? Are you able to?
Not fully yet. We have to be in service for a full year for those metrics to truly fall in place. But I can tell you, just going over the monthly that I get from MCA, eighty, probably eighty to eighty-eight percent of our runs are Medicare/Medicaid.
Okay.
Out of the county. Very, very few people have the private insurance. Plus, you also have to add in whenever it's a car wreck. Medical insurance does not pay any of that. That all goes to car insurance, no matter what.
Okay. All right, thank you. Just curious on that.
Now, the upside to car insurance is they usually paying for, period. They don't question.
Yeah.
So.
So, Michael, uh, the first payment for the two hundred thousand, is that in May? Is that when you're all planning on? Have you discussed that? I know you were maybe talking about that a few months ago. You're planning to.
They discussed it a little bit in our last board meeting and they've set it to still come out in May.
Yeah, okay. And so we're right at four hundred ninety-six, three eighty-seven, ninety-nine. Okay, that's really good. And, uh, so, well, I, I think you're all doing a great job and, uh, appreciate what you're doing.
And I know another question a lot of people have, um, is the second truck. And we're getting very close to that. I need six more employees. I have ten applications so far. We've already started in the interview process for that, so we're moving, we're moving right along with that. If not by the end of the month, mid-April, um, had a meeting with Dr. Benz, had a very good meeting with him. He's went ahead and approved everything again. He just wanted to go over that ALS protocol again before we sat down and actually implemented it.
So if you put on six more employees and you don't roll any calls, or, I mean, you're still, I'm sure, gonna roll a call or two, but you're hoping to cut down on that number twenty-three, I'm sure, by having that second truck. And you, it looks pretty good for you, uh, to have, be able to stay stable financially.
Plus, with that second truck, with it being ALS, we'll be able to bill more because we'll be performing ALS instead of BLS.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, on the, uh, payment back in May, will you use, will you use that two hundred thousand and just start paying it back right out of that two, pot of two hundred thousand?
That was one of the discussions they had. That's gonna be totally up to the board, but that was one of their discussions. It also. It also depends on, you know, what we have in the bank at that time. But what, our ultimate goal is not to touch that two hundred thousand. We want that as kind of a, just in case we have to use it.
And what's the interest rate on the two hundred thousand that we're having to pay back?
It's, it was, it was originally six percent and we put it into bonds.
Yeah, and I believe that's, I believe that's what it still is.
And they were drawing five percent. Am I right on that?
Yeah, but is that five percent calculation on bonds, the same calculation as six percent?
Or CDs, that's what it was in. It was in CDs that they kept reinvesting it in there at five percent was what they were getting on it.
Yeah, but is that five percent like that annual percentage or is that five percent? Five percent of two hundred thousand, help me here, is, uh, ten thousand, correct? Somebody help me with that. Twenty percent is twenty thousand?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Ben's a lawyer, not a patent. So my, so my question is, if, if my question is, is it gain ten thousand dollars? If, if it gained the true five percent, it gains ten thousand dollars, whereas six percent is you're gonna be paying, you know, eleven. I'm just, I'm just curious. I understand what he's saying and you think the percentage is right, but if you actually know how CDs work, I don't, I don't know, is it actually gaining ten thousand dollars in a year?
Yes.
Okay?
Yeah, I mean, uh, well Brenda Cunningham's taking care of all that, so I'm glad she is and, and I'm sure that, uh, that she's working really hard on that.
That's all I got.
So, anyway, the.
Yeah, believe me, she keeps real close to us.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Michael, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Next is approval of claims for all county funds as presented to the fiscal court.
Make motion.
Okay, we got.
One second.
Is there any late?
Woody and Johnny?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Clerk Colwell.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horsley.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Okay, next approval of transfers for all county funds and presented to the fiscal court.
Motion to approve.
Okay, Mark and.
I'll make a question.
And Woody. Any further discussion? Clerk Colwell.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horsley.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Alrighty, let's see, we got another page here to go on. Any announcements?
I, I have just a quick announcement, Judge.
Okay.
I'll be brief. And before, before I say this, don't, don't take the Lexi and the Cedar as, I'm just, no one is approaching me about that, which I, I know sounds weird that somebody maybe is trying to do something without really getting pressured to do it, but, but I, but they're not. And Moose, I know, should have maybe mentioned that to you, apologize, um, but kind of, just kind of have a little thing here I want to say real quick. After much prayer and thoughtful consideration, I would like to share at this time, I will not be seeking a fourth term in the Office of Magistrate this upcoming November election cycle. I've only shared this news with very few people several months ago, but feel like it is appropriate thing to do on a wider public scale at this time. I'm looking forward to working continuously to help our county and the people that we serve. Also look forward to new possibilities and opportunities that may arise and I'm thankful for all the past and current possibilities that I've been blessed with through this job. My entire life's been dedicated to Lewis County, either as a student, an athlete, a teacher, principal, director, coach, magistrate or a church member, and I don't see any of that changing for me or my family. My family has a long history of elected officials and I don't see that ever changing. And on behalf of them, myself and all those who come after me, I'm very thankful to those who allowed us to serve by having the faith to cast their vote. Uh, if I wanted to think and say all the names personally, it would be a very long list, it would be literally thousands of people, um, but I can't close my statement without mentioning just a few. First and foremost, my father, Tim Underwood, who has not only ran successful campaigns for himself, but has been my right hand for the total of twelve years of public service and was thoughtful enough to share with me the wisdom of his grandfather, Woody Everman. Along with that, I'd like to thank my wife and mother.